Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, if all will stand, who can't stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Awards and proclamations, 3.1.
Item 3.1, Senator Randall Hardy to present the City of Salina and City Manager Jason Gage a Kansas Senate tribute in conjunction with the 100th anniversary of City Management Day.
Senator, how are you?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's great to be back. I apologize, I was not able to participate in the presentation of the resolution last week, which actually celebrates the 100th anniversary of the city manager form of government in Kansas. Well, I thought it was important enough to come back this week because it's being part of the city government in Salina. Salina has been a part of the city manager form of government for close to 100 years. It was one of the very first cities to sign on to the city manager form of government. And I feel like this event is important enough to honor Salina a second time for adopting the city manager form of government almost 100 years ago. Our forefathers concluded that a city like Salina would benefit by having a commission of citizens to develop policy for the city and entrust the day-to-day operations of the city to an individual trained in running city government. That system of government has served Salina well over the decades, and I thought it was fitting to present the city with a Senate tribute for its long history using the city manager form of government. So today I have a Senate tribute. This is what it looks like. Kansas Senate tribute, be it hereby known to all that official recognition is extended to the City of Salina in recognition of 96 years of city management form of government. The Kansas Senate and Senator Randall Hardy join in congratulating the City of Salina on their well-deserved recognition for 96 years of city management form of government and commend them on their commitment of outstanding service to the Salina community and the state of Kansas. Signed, Randall Hardy, Senator, State of Kansas. So I'm going to present that to you.
Thank you very much.
And then I have one more. And this one's for Jason. I would also like to recognize Jason Gage for the part he has played in keeping the city running smoothly. Salina has experienced challenging and exciting times during Jason's tenure. Jason has done an admirable job keeping Salina on an even keel through all kinds of fiscal environments. Thank you, Jason, for your work for the City of Salina. And I have another tribute. It says, Kansas Senate tribute, be it hereby known to all that official recognition is extended to Jason A. Gage in recognition of outstanding service to the City of Salina. The Kansas Senate and Senator Randall Hardy join in commending Jason A. Gage for his outstanding service to the City of Salina, the community, and the state of Kansas. And with that, that completes my presentation.
Great. Can you wait until I take a quick picture of you with Mr. Gage? If I can work this thing, which I'm not too sure of. I'm not real good at this. I'm not very good at this, but...
Okay, guys, look here. I can get you...
Oh, there. Let her do it.
Roger, you're gonna get one over there, too.
Okay. All right. One, two, three.
Wait, just a second. I always get my fingers in front of it. Okay. Now I think I got it. All right. Good. Good deal. Thank you, Senator Hardy. That was great. It was nice of you to thank out, too, and to...
Commissioners, if I could, just even though my name was the only one mentioned, I will... I need to say that there's a lot of work that goes on around here. And we have Mike, as you know, the Deputy City Manager, and our department heads, and our division heads, and all the people that work for them. And we have a lot of great, talented people that make my job easy. And when we have a bad day, gives me someone to blame something on. I don't like to kid about that, but we have great people, and that makes all difference in the world. So, and that starts with the leadership up there.
Well, we appreciate all of you, including Mr. Bankston, too. We're very glad for him sometimes. In fact, all the time. Okay, thank you very much, and enjoyed that very much. Okay, Citizens Forum, is there anyone here who would like to come to the podium and have anything to say to the commissioners? We'd be glad to have you. Just give your name and your address, please.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. I wanted to thank all of you for going to the Expo Center last Monday and touring those facilities. It was a start of an important dialogue. Commissioner Blanchard made a comment that I thought deserves a response, and I'm not so sure I'm the best person to respond. But you had said something about wanting to see a successful fair. And we were a day just completing a very, very successful festival. So I think that was fresh in everybody's mind, and that's something that the city really does a lion's share of work to bring about and to facilitate. And I found myself thinking, well, I wonder if Commissioner Blanchard is aware that with 4H, there are no more than 350 kids between Saline County and Ottawa County, and Ottawa has its own fair. And there are master gardeners, but master gardeners don't always compete. And I was thinking back to the Colorado State Fair, which has kind of an ABC theme, which stands for Always By Colorado. And that's a huge focus of their fair. And I found myself wondering, well, why can't we have a Tri-Rivers Proud kind of fair? And that speaks to a professionalism that, to be honest, 4H and the open class are kind of amateur. And if you've done anything with 4H, I came across an article that said it really exists to teach parents the proper agriculture skills or home economic skills. And it was just kind of this ruse by educating their kids. The parents themselves learned. And 4H was wonderful for me. It paid for two years of college in terms of tuition and grants and scholarships. And so there's a lot to be said, but we live in a society now where instead of record-keeping, you keep your records on your Facebook page or on Instagram. And it's a whole lot of fun, and you don't have to actually put your project in the car and take it to the fair at a specific time and be judged. And we kind of like the accolades without quite all the pain of actually seeing how we measure up. And so it's a different kind of thing. And I just wanted to point to the role of case state extension having with the fair. They can't control the number of 4H'ers they have, nor can they control their master gardeners. There's a lot of dynamics, but there's many groups that feed into the whole process. And like I say, I think your question deserves a good answer. But I just wanted to speak to, or I just wanted to reflect on some of the things that came up for me.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you for going with us on that hot day.
It was hot.
It was awful hot. Thank you for going with us. Thank you for your comments. Okay, public hearings, an item scheduled for a certain time. We do not have consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 12, 2017. 6.2, approve the minutes of June 13, 2017. Item 6.3, approve resolution number 17-7461, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with travelers for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance. And item 6.4, authorize the use of funds not to exceed $57,000 to be used towards the completion of the fire department tribute plaza at Fire Station Number 1.
Okay, is there any item on the agenda any commissioner wants to pull off and wants more information on? If not, I'll go ahead.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor. If I could, I would like to remove item 6.4, please.
Okay, 6.4. May I have an entertaining motion on 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. All those in favor?
And, excuse me, can I ask a question, though, just for a matter of discussion? Just a quick question on item 6.3. And that is, is the 3% annual, is that 3% increase that is, that we're experiencing, that traveler's policy, is that somewhat within the realm of historical increases?
Yeah, actually, generally in fairly good years. So I would say absolutely.
Okay, great.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on 6.1, 6.2, 6.3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, 6.4. Commissioner Hodges.
Basically, I just wanted to go over, since I was not here when this project began, I just wanted to invite Chief Royce up and see if he could give us a summary of the project to date. We had a wonderful update in our packet of materials, but I thought for the benefit of maybe people that were watching at home, we could go over where the funds have come from to date, what's been raised, and how much we have left to raise, and how we can contribute.
All right, absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I believe in August of 2015, my predecessor, Chief Mulikin, stood in front of four of you and expressed his vision of a tribute plaza that would kind of be the cap and the final piece of the station remodel at Station 1. And we specifically want to make it a tribute plaza and not a memorial plaza. And the tribute plaza would be to all the men and women of the Salina Fire Department that have served graciously to the community and so forth. During that time, a committee was formed. Some artists were contacted. Some designs were submitted. And in the last year and a half to 18 months, or I'm sorry, to two years, substantial progress has been made. And I'm not trying to dodge this, but I came in kind of halfway through the project, and I sat in the committee meetings as a non-voting committee member. But Fire Marshal Williams here is a committee member. And if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to him for... He was here from the very beginning of it, and he'll be glad to fill you in on some of the details. Thank you.
Marshal Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As Chief Royce said, this was a vision that Chief Mulikin had put out in front of our committee as we started into the whole Station 1 remodel project. And as we got closer into the last phase, Phase 2 of the station project, we really started to put that vision out. And as was included in your packet, you have some renderings and some different drawings that show kind of what our vision was for that plaza. To date, we've raised $77,205. That's been through in-kind gifts, through two different grants. We've applied for and received internal donations from our members. As such, there, in that packet, you'll see the inner ring is in the shape of a Maltese cross. Those bricks, the firemen can purchase those bricks and have their name and years of service put on there. We also sent out with some assistance from the Chamber of Commerce a mass mailer to some of our business community. We've had really good success with that. We've also given them the option, if they either wanted just to financially contribute, they could do that. Or they had the option, they could actually, on the walkway, as you approach the Maltese cross, they could actually have a larger brick with their company logo and whatever, basically, they wanted to have on there, whether it was a business name or whatever that would look like. We're still working with the stone folks to come up with some better ideas on that piece. Bob Miller with Bus Boom and Raw has been very instrumental in helping us with not only the design and the layout, but as well as through his contacts in the construction community, we're doing the best that we can to keep that cost down. The largest financial piece is the artist's sculpture. The artist is Benjamin Victor. He actually, I believe, won a local piece here in Salina as well. Very well-renowned artist, sculptor. Beautiful work. If you ever get an opportunity, go to his website, and you'll see some really impressive sculptures. We're glad to be able to have him. As it is today, if we're successful in receiving the funds requested, we would still be about $25,000 short. With that said, the committee, as well as Chief Royce, we're still going to continue to reach out to the community. As of today, we have not really gone public with this. That's going to be the next piece of this, is now that we've kind of, I don't want to say exhausted those resources, they're getting more scarce with all the other projects going on in the community. So now we're going to open it up and allow the general public to also be a part of that vision of our tribute plaza. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
Where can, do you have a site where people can send donations to yet? Or is that something that you're going to have kind of a public launch? I just kind of wanted to put in a plug for you here.
Yes and no. We do have a GoFundMe page.
Oh, good.
I haven't opened it up yet. It's set up, designed, ready to go. I wanted to make sure that, first of all, we were able to do that. I kind of got the cart before the horse. I kind of did that.
A man after my own heart.
So I need to make sure that, first of all, that we can even have a GoFundMe page. If the answer is yes, then we'll open that up.
Okay.
We'll be doing some informational releases, as well as some of the renderings on our Facebook page.
Great.
And then we'll also, and I haven't discussed this with the chief yet, but we may look at having another open house. We had an open house, kind of a welcome to the new addition of the station, possibly doing another open house event for the community again to come in, those that didn't get to make the first one, to be able to come see the station, see where their tax dollars went, and then also, again, have some information available there for contributions as well. And anyone who's interested, they can obviously call the fire station, call myself, at least for a little while. And then they can call Chief Royce, and we can make sure and get them the information they need to contribute or donate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, and Chief Mulikin as well for initiating this. And thank you for the follow-through. I just have a quick question for Mr. Gage, and that is, if I understand this correctly, the funds that are going to be needed are approximately $25,000 for this project. What will the $32,000, once this has been expended, will that just go to general fund?
The 30, oh, you're asking about the 32 that's the result of the building funds?
Well, I'm saying there's $57,000 left over from the building fund, and if this is going to... If they're looking at needing about $25,000, or whatever ends up being that balance, will that... Does that money go back into the general fund? Or where does that, where does that go back into the fire department budget? Where does that...
I'm still not... Go ahead, Roger.
We've set up an account where we actually have an account that specifically is in finance for not only the grants, but any monies. So there's actually an account set up right now specific for the tribute plaza.
Okay.
So if the funds were the $57,000 that was left over from the project, that would go into our tribute plaza fund.
Okay.
Is the way I'm envisioning it.
The gap that Roger speaks of is in addition to the $57,000. I don't know if that's...
Oh, okay. So we're actually about $57,000, $67,000, about $82,000 shy?
Yes.
So your, the plan is to raise 25, and then to expend the entire $57,000?
Right. Yeah, we think, quite honestly, if we get within about 25, it makes it a little easier to do kind of a finish-off donation or two to finish off the project.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay. We're under administration, 7.1.
We need to vote on that one.
Oh, we need to vote on that, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I would authorize... Madam Mayor, I would authorize, move that we authorize the use of funds not to exceed $57,000 to be used toward the completion of Fire Department Tribute Plaza at Fire Station Number 1.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve item 6.4. All those in favor, say aye.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Discussion.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear on that, so if we authorize a use of funds not to exceed, are we going to place $57,000 in that fund? And if so, would it be just, we're just expending that $57,000? It's not a up to, it's an exactly $57,000.
Yeah, the tribute plaza was, we've looked at it and is considered to be, it can be considered to be part of the building project. So we're good as far as the eligibility of the use of the dollars. I'll have to look, talk to finances to whether they would truly, in essence, move it from the project account over to that account, or it could be, I think it'll probably stay in the project account until we have the expense and be expended out, unless there's a reason, we just simply need to close the project account, then we would move it over into the tribute project account. So, but it'll be in one of those two accounts.
Okay, because are those bonded funds already?
Yes, yes.
And so we would be, it might be easier and cleaner to do that.
Yeah, unless there's a reason, finance says we need to go ahead and close out the project and close out that account, we'd probably just leave it in there, and when they need it, they can pull from it.
Okay.
Or finance might have another thought.
But it's full $57,000, it's not up to.
Yeah, because even with that, we're still... And I think I have good estimates on this, to be about $25,000 short. So we do anticipate that.
All right. Super, thank you.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve item 6.4. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And hopefully, when we have a big opening day, maybe we can invite Chief Mulikin back. I remember when he did this, and when he first came up talking about it, I think we were all in favor of that at the time.
Yeah, but the intent of the plaza is not to just be there by itself. We intend to have promotional ceremonies, 911 ceremonies, and actually, community-type ceremonies, maybe some fire prevention activities, utilize it effectively.
Have a big celebration.
We will, we will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, resolution number 17-7463, adopting the ethics policy of the City of Salina, Kansas.
Mr. Bankston.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The resolution before you is the result of your discussions on May 22 and June 5. As requested, the general ethical principles set forth in Section 4 have been reordered, as you had suggested. At our recommendation, Section 7 has been modified to refer to the appearance of bias instead of the appearance of conflict of interest. We have completed the footnoting of the policy. In doing so, hopefully, helpfully, recognize that it might be good to have a definition, just a Black's Law Dictionary definition of quasi-judicial, to go along with our definition of quasi-judicial proceeding that is a little bit more localized in its description. The remaining question is in Section 10b2, where we do need to decide whether recusal includes leaving the meeting room or not. So with that, would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
Yes, I wrote down my question, and I hate to be able to understand my note here. If there is a perceived conflict of interest that one of the commission members becomes aware of during the meeting and have reason to believe that the commissioner may not have disclosed or may not even be aware of the disclosure, is that information requested during the open part of the meeting? Or is it proper to request an executive session with legal counsel and discuss that in the closed meeting, and then come back and report?
That, I believe, is, and we've always taken the position that when that comes up and there's a need for consultation with possibly your colleagues and legal counsel, that that is a legitimate subject for attorney-client privileged communication. So I would expect that that would be the scenario, that there would be, you know, hit that as quickly as possible, stick to the legal aspect, and come out and deal with the substance as quickly as possible.
And if a citizen comes to the podium and raises an issue of conflict of interest, is that also then... If that's discussed in executive session, who then gives the formal response back to the citizen at the podium?
That, I would expect, is going to be a case-by-case situation, depending on where we think we are. It may very well be a matter that the commission member with the question, or the, to whom the question relates, may be the one that wants to respond initially. Or if there's a role either that the city manager or that legal counsel would have, we're obviously available as well to try to respond to the question.
And would it be a situation where, if the issue could not be settled quickly, would it be proper to table that particular item until the issue can be settled? Or is it more, and not that it comes up often, or do we just proceed anyway?
Presumably, at that point in time, the member who has the issue in question will know how to address that, or at least have advised how to address that. So assuming that's the case, it'll, that's really going to be really a question for you, the governing body, as to whether you would wish to postpone that item to another day, or whether you'd wish to go ahead and potentially vote with one fewer, one less member. Or, depending on the situation, you still might be voting with the full membership. It just depends. But I think that'd be a choice that you, you guys, as a group, would need to make.
All right, thank you.
Thank goodness these items don't come up too often, hopefully. Okay, any other questions?
I just had a, I think it's a typo, or maybe I'm just not understanding the sentence correctly. Section 8, number 2, under special ethics counsel. Let's see. Specifically relating to the administration enforcement of this policy. It's just missing an "of."
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, for what it's worth.
No, I appreciate it.
I've got a question regarding Section 6 in the common law conflict of interest section. And I want to lay out a scenario that, that, at least for me, has the potential to be something that would be important for me to know, and a clear distinction. Okay, and it has to do with the common, the statement at the, after number, after it lists the four scenarios. Says, "The common law recognizes that a common law conflict of interest does not arise from a remote or speculative interest or the mere possibility of future conflicts of interest." Now, in understanding the state statute and what's laid out there, they do what is a look back at whether you've had, if you have substantial interest by virtue of being compensated in the past. Okay. To put myself in the scenario of an independent subcontractor as a planner working for an engineering firm, okay, who is doing a project for XYZ developer, okay? I don't have substantial interest in either one of them because I haven't generated any fees yet. Okay, I could technically go through the entire project without a substantial conflict of interest or without receiving a penny. If the contract were structured as such, that compensation would occur after approval, or conditioned upon approval of a project. How does that, how would something like that be addressed if the common law, if it says here that even the common law doesn't arise from scenarios like that? And how would being an independent contractor as a subcontractor for an engineer be any different than being a subcontractor, or an independent contractor in the real estate agent-broker scenario as well?
I want to make sure I'm clear in the first question. The first question is, is you know that you would, whoever is the subcontractor, whoever it would be, the person knows they would receive compensation after the fact. They know it, and it's part of the deal. know it, and it's part of the deal, they just don't receive compensation right then.
Right.
Because in that case, you have an agreement, you're probably, may not be under substantial interest because of the pre-look, but I'm presuming you might be under a common law conflict of interest because of actually knowing and writing that you would receive compensation after the fact, presuming all other factors are met. I'm going to kick that as more of a question to Greg.
Yeah, I, frankly, Commissioner, if I may, I'm going to hesitate to speculate on answers related to common law conflicts today, because, I mean, I think to the extent we would find it useful, and to the extent that we document those facts in a way that we can intelligently and carefully analyze them, I think that's, if that's your wish, happy to do that. But I don't think, there may be somebody out there that's capable of doing that offhand, but I'm not.
Okay.
There's just enough going on there.
I mean, I think that that forward-looking aspect gets, does get a little tricky.
Oh, it does.
Can.
No question.
Gets a little bit tricky, so.
Common law conflicts of interest questions, they're, they are just difficult.
Well, right, I mean, because if we're looking at employee versus independent contractor, 1099-type relationships, I mean, I, they do kind of sometimes do it. And then I just, just to follow up, as we go down, the very last sentence of that is under subsection B, the local policy states, "A city officer or employee shall disclose and abstain from any action relating to a matter which presents him or her with a common law conflict of interest." And so, is that something that maybe we get more into, the question of what Commissioner Davis was asking about earlier, and that, when is the determination made, and by whom, and who announces that? I mean, is that?
It's not a very precise answer, but all I know to say is that if we have those situations come up, we're going to have to be pretty, as light on our feet as we can be, and as quick as we can be to jump in, assess the facts, and address the situation.
Yeah, and I think, I think the whole policy does a really good job of making that task much easier. So I think probably the silver lining in all of that is that, at least we have a framework now by which to work from, that, that makes that. And then, on, and this kind of goes to Commissioner Davis's questions earlier, too. Section 9, and what is the anticipation of action? And I have a couple of questions on that, and, and it, and it goes to a separate-party-initiated inquiry, and a couple of things. Is typically the board liaison that's referred to in here, and I don't know, I apologize, I don't know if that was put in the definitions or not, but I know in the circumstance of Heritage Commission, I believe, John Berger's, the Heritage Commission, would that be an accurate description, or in the case of the Planted Commission, Dean Andrew, is that, is that what's, is that who we're talking about with the board liaison?
That you're talking whether that refers to the assigned city staff?
Right, it's not the city commissioner that is like sitting in on the, right, parking rack.
That's a good point, and I, those offhand would always be staff persons, and I wonder if your point isn't well-taken, that we can certainly make reference to the applicable staff, board liaison, or somehow make that, that's a good point.
Okay.
If that would be helpful.
No, that is, that's very helpful, because it kind of leads to my next question, and that is, is that should, and it kind of parallels with Commissioner Davis's question, is that if, what happens if that separate-party-initiated doesn't understand the process, which is citizen goes to the board liaison, goes to the city manager, and then goes to either Special Ethics Council or City Council? But absent the citizen knowing that, typically, they may look to their elected representative and say, "Hey, I've got a concern on something like this, can you look into it?" What would be the proper role, and I guess duty, of that official to make sure that that word gets passed along and that that process is initiated?
Well, that's a good question. The whole, as you look at this, the funnel is designed to get it to me than to Greg, and whether, or to me and Greg, whichever, it really doesn't matter. This is city manager, just because of the structural role, but we know it's going to Greg to take initial look at, so that's the end result. First of all, we'll have to have some training from a city employee, called the staff board liaison perspective, so we need to be sure that they understand the situation, because we're not going to be at every board meeting. And that's part of, I think, what your concern might be, is you have a certain board meeting, we're not there, something comes up, are they going to know what to do with it? And that's a good question, and we need to be sure from a staff perspective, they do. I think, we'll have to think a little bit about if it goes to someone other than the staff person, for example, how do we cover this in board orientation training?
Right.
And do they remember it even if we do? It's an interesting thing, if you're, or do we have, do we possibly sit down annually and provide some type of reminder, refresher information in some form, to all board members, or to at least the chair of each of those, and possibly also to you as a city commission, both for your role as a city commission, and potentially, if they come to you because you are a commission liaison and say, "I have an issue," so that you guys are always up to speed with what you need to do with it next. I think the difficulty, the easy part will be eventually taking it through the funnel, which means it gets to Greg and I, and then ultimately Greg will look at it, and I'll look at it, and we'll decide where we go and what happens from that point. The difficulty is, how does it affect that particular action in that meeting at that time? That is more difficult when we're not there.
Right.
So we really need to put some thought into that, whether, how it affects, does the member know what the member should or shouldn't do? If the member, in that case, doesn't have us there to advise, they want to take a cautious, we emphasize a cautious approach, that says, maybe you shouldn't participate if there's any question until we can work it out. Then it goes back to the question earlier of, does, what does the board do? Do they go ahead and act or not, with or without the person, which is a choice that that board actually has in front of them?
Mm-hmm.
They could do either one.
Right.
But it could affect a vote, if it's a split vote, it may not if it's a unanimous vote. So those are interesting questions, scenario questions, I think we need to think about as we, as we deal with, what do you do in the meeting, and we're not in those particular meetings, because we can't be in all of them.
Yeah, well, and to the extent it might be helpful, we have, in past orientation sessions, Jason leads, and I usually assist with, at least with cell phones, and, and we have encouraged the liaisons to make the contact immediately, and I think between Jason and our office, we would try to respond extemporaneously, to the extent possible.
Okay. I was just going to follow up on saying that, you know, as you develop the policy that goes along with the ethics policy, I think it really would be helpful to have, whether that looks like an annual refresher, or for all the boards, so that, you know, a board member would know that they have the option, say, to table that action item, or to, you know, or for that particular board member to recuse him or herself pending a decision.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. One of the things, as you know, we do the board orientation for new, those that are new to their boards. Right now, I don't believe, the policy requires us to provide that, I don't believe it requires the new board member to attend. That in itself is a question, given this, that we need to think about. However, that would only, in its current form, address a new board member to a particular board, even if the board member has been on other boards. It doesn't necessarily address the refresher. We have found that, well, I believe it'd be almost impossible to get a physical attendance with a refresher course of all boards, so we need to think about other means that we might be able to accomplish that. And there are other means we can look at, but I think certainly, we need to consider that.
Yeah, those, those folks that are serving on those boards really need to have, you know, the education of that, and to know what they're supposed to do. And I know a lot of times, board members don't attend those meetings, as I recall, as I look back always.
Yeah, some don't.
Don't always, all don't.
Most of them do, but, you know.
They don't all.
Sometimes it's a scheduling issue, usually it is a scheduling issue.
Right.
But as we start to talk more about these types of issues, I think it does place a little more importance on the attendance of those. But that's another policy question for you, as to whether you believe that those folks should be required to say before they can act in the capacity that they've been appointed to, that they have to attend the training first. That would be, might be an approach.
Couldn't the liaison just make it a, a part of a regular meeting, that everybody would be attending anyway, and that, and make that a, a part of an early instruction that they get, like we have our study sessions on various things? I mean, I agree that the education piece is really important, because it's a complex issue, and I don't think people are really thinking as deep as that all of this policy goes when they volunteer for a position.
Yeah, that's a good point. Historically, we've provided that with those planning-oriented boards, they have had that type of training, and we can look at what we've done, and whether we need to make any refinements or not. We haven't, we haven't done that with the other boards. I don't know that all of our staff people are as attuned to the conflicts as what the planners would be, just simply because it's inherent in planning, and not so much in other types of activities. So that's a good question. If we could do that, it would make it more convenient to the board member, for sure. So that's something we need to consider as an option, is if we could do that, but it's, we're going to have to train some of ourselves, some of our other staff people, to a lot higher degree than we would otherwise, in order to get there. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure they could actually provide that.
Well, if we want to change the culture to be more sensitive to all of this, then I think that's kind of the direction you have to go with it.
Yeah.
Could offer one, at the hospital yearly, we have to reread the ethics policy, and answer probably three or four, the questions aren't hard, but the questions, just make sure that you've read it. You know, so it's, it's an easy way to do the refresher course. And, of course, at that point, once you say you've read it, you are then responsible for, for whatever's in the document.
Right. I've got a question that, that kind of, it involves Section 14, which is the consequences for a violation, and Section 9, which is a section that looks at the anticipation of the thing. First question is, is that, if you look at Section 12, that addresses preventative judicial remedies, is that simply there as a way to say if we've anticipated a conflict, and the affected member disagrees and is going to act outside of the recommendation not to act? Would that be, in essence, we would have to go get an injunction to make sure that that person does not act?
That's the purpose of that.
Okay.
To reinforce the fact that that is available to you.
So Section 12 is very narrowly scoped, in that if we've gone through the process of identifying, and there's been some disagreement as to that, and there's going to, and we anticipate that an action or a vote is going to take place, that we have a remedy to, to go in and avoid the problems that may, may potentially come along with that.
Right, as the preface to that sentence says, it's strictly up to the governing body as to whether that occurs, but it relates to all levels of boards and commissions and employees.
Okay. And then my last question on Section 9 and 14 is, whether it's anticipated, or it's an after-the-fact scenario, if something comes from either a board member, a governing body member, or a member of the community at large, that, hey, I've got a question with this, and I'm triggering that process of going to the city manager and figuring out whether it's a substantial or common law, or whatever, whatever kicks off that issue. How does Kansas Open Records Act view what we call in here, the actions that it deems to be, to best serve the public interest? That, that phrase is in here twice.
Is under, under what, Section 14?
Well, it's under Section 13, actually. But, I'm sorry, yeah, Section 13, under, under the B and C. That once it's been identified, and we've said, okay, either the board is going to, in the case of an appointed board member, we say, upon the discovery of the action already taken, of the undisclosed substantial interest, or disqualifying substantial interest, or a common law conflict of interest, the acting body, which at the board level would be whatever board that is, I'm assuming, after consulting with city staff and legal counsel, and this is the part I'm asking about, take the action it deems to best serve the public interest. Is that, whatever the result of that action is, is that open to, I mean, if, if somebody makes a complaint, and they say, "Well, geez, I brought up the complaint," do I have a right to know what the outcome of that staff and legal counsel determination was? Do I have a right to know what that action it deems to best serve the public interest would be? And how is that disclosed? Is it just disclosed at the, at the meeting, when the action, if anticipated, happened? Or in response to an action that happened, how would that be, how would that be disclosed, I guess?
Good, I don't, that's a good question. I don't think Section 13 is intended to deal with the response to someone who brought up the issue, and, and what the city's response to the issue is. Isn't it more of the, dealing with the implication of the board's action and their vote?
Yes, that, 13 was intended to make clear that it could very well be that there is recognition that there was a problem.
Right.
With an action taken by virtue of, well, there's a problem. That was simply to make the point, more than anything, that if, if there is some legal, legitimate remedial action that needs to be taken, then that board, let's say, in the case of B, that board is in a position, if you will, to self-correct in terms of
Right.
the public action taken. So in that context, at least my anticipation was, it would be more of the nature of a public act that would be taken in response to whatever the problem was.
Okay.
More just acting on the substance of the do-over, if you will.
Okay.
If, if there's something that can be done to correct the circumstance legally, then just to reinforce the idea that, that that board still has that opportunity to take that remedial action, if there is one.
Okay, okay. And then just a, just a housekeeping item under Section 14, and this probably happened when we reordered and restructured, it's just that first sentence is described in consequences of violation for city officer employees, as described in Section 4A4, it should be 5A4?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I think it's just when you reorder all those.
Yeah, that happened when we brought
Yeah.
4 into the current position, but it's still something we should have recognized, so.
And then, but, and then just a real quick question, is that, in Section 14, and that is, is what, if we have a process, what is the process that we go through to determine whether or not the state statute kicks in on substantial interest, or if we're dealing with something outside of that? Would that be handled at the, at the, at the, at your level, as a city council?
That would probably be necessary, yes.
Okay. And so, once that is determined, then, then we would go, go from there?
And depending on the circumstance, it may be, it's always the potential for a scenario where a higher authority would have to be called upon, but first, first line of analysis, I think, is between the extent to which the city manager and I might be able to assist with that.
Okay. And then, just a, just a broad question, that kind of goes back to, I think, the questions and concerns, I think that everybody kind of had on, on the different boards and commissions and the, and the orientation or familiarization with this thing. That is, is that, would probably, would we likely need to do some housekeeping on things like Planted Commission bylaws and/or others to kind of, you know, we oftentimes bring our ordinance into, into compliance with state standards? Is that something that can happen administratively, or is that something that would happen, have to happen at each board level, or, or does it come back to us? I mean, to what level does that need to be done repetitiously, and what, and what point can it be done?
Yeah.
Through a repealer, or whatever?
For Greg, I think if the action eventually to approve this resolution would supersede the bylaws in itself, at that point, right?
It would, but, and we have discussed, to a certain extent, I think there's a, there's now a to-do list that will follow, assuming your action on this policy, that would eliminate any ambiguity, and most likely, in any bylaws, simply make reference to this policy in place of any, any other language.
Okay. And then just lastly, I'd like to compliment you, because the rewrite of this, really, it's very readable. it's very readable, and so I think that anybody serving on boards and commissions and governing bodies in the future have a document that, while it has some legalese to it, it's mostly now footnoted, but that I appreciate the fact that I believe it's very readable, and so I thank you, and to whatever help you, to whoever helped.
Well, I appreciate that, and certainly Erin Martin was involved in that process as well, in certain components of it, and I appreciate that a lot. And I think, the only thing I would add, I hope, this whole, when you get into areas of the law, that is so fact-intensive, like particularly, you've got the very objective substantial interest test, and you've got the highly subjective limited law in the common law conflict area, and the, it's interesting statewide, how often you'll see examples, and as you might imagine, we looked at a number of, you know, how can this be approached a little more simply? But the case law just does not make that common law analysis simple, and a number of cities have attempted to narrow that in certain ways, I assume, just to try to get their hand, you know, get a grip on it. But it is what it is, and I wish I could make it simpler, but it just is not.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Any other questions?
I've got a question, but I take it from the opening comments, we need to, well, maybe we don't. We're in agreement that in Section 10B2, that anyone stepping down would leave the room.
Yeah, we need to make that.
All right. Go ahead. Ready to call the question, or the next step, whatever that is.
Did we talk about that again, then?
You don't have to.
All right.
Okay.
I was the only one that cared.
Mayor, if it's helpful, I'll certainly review quickly, if it's the, if this might help in terms of the making of the motion, we would certainly make the correction of the insertion of the word "of" there in the description of the special ethics council that Commissioner Hodges pointed out. We could add the adjective "staff," "board liaison," where it appears, to make that clarification. And then, in Section 14, where we previously referred to Section 4, made that cross-reference, that would instead be to Section 5A4. That was, I believe, the extent of the corrections or suggestions that were made during the discussion, but.
I think that's right.
Unless I missed anything, but.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Madam Mayor, move, this is just one-time reading, approval of resolution number 17-7463, adopting the ethics policy of the City of Salina, Kansas, with the three corrections as just referenced by the city attorney.
Okay. Is there a second?
Can I ask the motion maker for, would you like to include Section 10B2, the phrase, "and leaving the meeting room"?
Well, it's in there now, I just.
Well, it's bracketed in there, so I don't know if that.
It is bracketed?
Yeah, it was bracketed, to be sure that you had that opportunity to address it.
Yes. So, 10, Section 10B, oh, I see what you, would read, stepping down from the dais and leaving the meeting room during consideration of the matter?
Yep.
And I would, I would second that, and just in anticipation, like a little, just a brief moment of discussion following.
Okay. Discussion?
So, we got a brief?
Motion in a second, yeah.
We have a motion in a second.
Okay. I appreciate, first of all, I just, I appreciate staff work, I appreciate commissions' work, and, not just this commission, but past commissions too, to where the ethics and conflicts of interest and bias and all the other things have been important to maintain public trust. I really appreciate the opening sentence, which is why we need to do things like this. And I'll just read, the reason for the policy is that we acknowledge the importance of sustaining the public's confidence in the integrity of its local government through independent, fair, and impartial local governments, and that includes administration as well. And, just, you know, to just clear up, you know, this is something that has been close to me for the last 30 years. Professionally, in dealing with planning commissions and city commissions and other governing bodies in the process of doing land development and different projects, it's critical that communities have trust in those boards, and that things are being done without conflicts and any, and really appearances of impropriety. And those things are really important, and you know, and so, those things have long been important. I think it's really great that we're having this policy in place, because the intent, really, is to provide people serving on these boards, a level of comfort that says, hey, I feel like I may be conflicted, I want to step out and not cause any damage to this process and to public confidence. And I think it will really go a long way into having people more comfortable about serving and understanding just what is involved in those conflicts. So, I just want to clear up that this has never been, I mean, we kinda got off a little bit about leaving room, and whether you should leave the room or not leave the room. And that's really, I mean, I'm glad that that part is in there, but really, the important parts that we really needed to do, because it's happened on occasions, and that is, is that we need to really focus on the need to disclose, and the need to step down. And then, of course, that would lead to leaving the room. But I think the key components are there, is we just need to recognize the need to disclose and step down to maintain that public confidence and integrity in our process. So, thank you to staff and everyone else for bringing this to fruition.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, and I know the rest of us all agree to that. I mean, it's well said, we all are on here for community's interest. Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 177463. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, Development Business, 8.1.
Real quick, Mayor, if I may, I do want to ask the question that relates to this, goes back to the board resolution that deals with the board's, not the rules and procedures, but just general board information. In that resolution, we addressed the training aspect, the orientation training. And I think it's important for me to walk away with an understanding is, would you like, under the most practical and expeditious way possible to get the training, is it important for you that your board members go through the training, that it's a requirement? Because if it's a requirement, well, I'll go back and read that resolution, but I believe we'll need to bring it back for an update. So, I wouldn't want to waste your time if it wasn't that important to you, but if it is, it'd be good to have at least consensus on that, and then we'll look at the trial.
I think it is. I think it's important to give all the training we can to people going on the new boards.
Okay.
Even if that takes the form of an online course, like Dr. Davis, I think that the one that the hospital does is an online course, you know, read through it, answer some questions, and that might be the best way to get everybody up to speed, not only the new people coming on those boards, but the people that have been there for some time that might not have had the exposure to it.
Yeah, and I think we'll have to, we'll put a lot of thought into the approach, and like I said, try to be as efficient as we can. There's a lot, as you experienced, there's a lot of complexities with the ins and outs of some of these, so it's a little tricky, but that helps me to understand that. We'll take a look at the policy in light of that, and then we'll determine if from that we need to bring it back.
I think it's just, you know, I think you've always done it, just brought them all into a room, but that's why you can't get everybody, because of the different work schedules and everything. So, it might be good to do, as Commissioner Hodges suggested, maybe if there's some way to do it online.
Because we recognize it's difficult.
And there'll be some that won't do it that way either.
Right. Well, we may have to offer it more than one means, because we recognize it is difficult just to get interest in boards, let alone to add more time, you know, more effort into that. So, if we can keep it simple and efficient, we'll do that. So, we'll look at the means, and if we run into issues with the means, we'll come back to you before we make a change there.
Right. And just for reference, that resolution number for that board policy is 126875, and it is, and orientation is addressed in Section 3B.
Now, we can go on to 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider acceptance of proposed public access utility and drainage easements in the replat of the Sutherland addition.
Oh. Where's Mr. Andrews? There he is.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Sutherland addition is out on the west side of South 9th Street, just north of Walmart. The original plat dates back to the 70s. There was a Sutherland addition plat that was done in 1993, and that plat consists of two commercial lots presently. There was a lot split done in 2012 that created a lot for Olive Garden, and there is now a proposal in place to create another lot to allow construction of an Arby's Restaurant facing the 9th Street Frontage Road at the north end of that property. And so, platted Lot 1 of the Sutherland addition has been split, this would be into three separate ownerships, and that requires replating of the property. So, the replat has a lot for Olive Garden, it has a proposed lot for an Arby's Restaurant, it has the balance of the property that is retained by Sutherland Home Improvement Company for future development. And then, the other thing that is new here is that they're proposing the construction of a common access road right here that would bisect the property and provide access to the Sutherland and over, or the Olive Garden parking lot. There's presently a driveway right here in Olive Garden, but it's barricaded, because there's no road to connect it to. So, the plan is to create these three commercial lots. The zoning is C5, and no change is anticipated for that. The plan for common drainage in this area is that there's a lineal detention basin back here, and the plan is that runoff from Arby's Olive Garden and this future development would all end up in this detention area there, and be discharged at a controlled rate into the I-135 right-of-way. So, the planning commission reviewed this plat at their June 6 meeting, and voted unanimously to approve it, and it's coming to you to consider acceptance of the utility drainage and access easement shown on the plat. And if you are in agreement with that, a motion should be made to accept those dedications and authorize the mayor to sign the plat. With that, I'd be open to any questions.
Questions? Okay. I guess we have no questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Madam Mayor, move, something that I need to phrase properly for you here, that we accept proposed public access utility and drainage easements in the replat of Sutherland addition.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to accept, consider acceptance of proposed public access under the replat of Sutherland addition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. 8.2.
Item 8.2, application number Z16-6A, requesting an amendment of Article 10, signs in Chapter 42.
Mr. Andrews, again.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. We're back to talk about temporary sign regulations. And just as a way of refresher or background, there was a original planning commission recommendation for a text amendment in March of 2017, and that came to you in the form of an ordinance for first reading on April 17, and you approved that on first reading, per the planning commission's recommendation. Then, on second reading, you paused and wanted the legal counsel to conduct additional research to confirm whether the city could lawfully accept certain categories of signs from the general prohibition on the placement of temporary commercial signs in residential zoning districts. And a research memo was prepared, and it was presented to you, and after you reviewed that and had additional discussion, you voted to return this item to the planning commission to look at those possible exceptions. And specifically, the city commission requested that the planning commission work with staff and legal counsel to develop language that would allow for off-site advertising signs, primarily for off-site open house and garage sale signs, and also to look at the onsite business signs, primarily contractors' signs, or what could be construed as construction signs. And so, this was taken back to the planning commission, their June 6 meeting, and at that meeting, Mr. Martin and myself worked with the planning commission on looking at non-content-based exceptions. And the disadvantage that the planning commission had was, back in March, when we were looking at possible exceptions to allow those types of signs, we were looking for exceptions that characterized the signs by message, and legal counsel thought that that was not very legally defensible. But when we took it back to them, we looked at it from the standpoint of content-neutral exceptions, meaning, instead of characterizing the signs by their function or their message, we characterize them broadly as advertising signs or onsite business signs. So, when you do that, you have the potential unintended consequence of allowing other types of commercial message signs. So, the planning commission discussed that, asked a number of questions, they reviewed the items that we presented at that meeting, and the amendments that they agreed to essentially deleted the definitions of garage sale, open house, and real estate signs as functional sign types, because there was no longer a need to refer to them. And the definitions of advertising sign and business sign were modified to include all the possible combinations of things like off-site, open house, off-site, real estate, off-site garage sale. And then, the definition of business sign was modified to include an onsite construction or contractor sign. And so, that dealt with the definition section in 42506, and in 42508, the general section dealing with temporary signs, they agreed to create a temporary exception, or exception for a temporary sign, one additional sign, up to four square feet in area and four feet in height, to be placed on a residential lot from 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday. And so, that advertising sign exception would essentially allow a off-site open house sign, or an off-site garage sale, from 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday. But it would also allow any other type of advertising sign. It just, whatever sign is put up, had, would have to conform with those time limitations and those size limitations. So, again, if somebody put a sign out on their corner lot, and it was advertising a business in another location of the community, or an event somewhere, and it wasn't related to a garage sale or an open house, that would still be permitted during that time period. And then, the other exception that was created was for an onsite business sign, to be displayed on a property where construction activities of any type are being actively performed on the property. And that sign would have to be removed no later than 30 days after the cessation of construction activities. The planning commission did have some discussion about expanding that to include maintenance activities, which would be things like lawn care, or perhaps landscaping maintenance, or things like that, but they. but they did not go there in their motion. So, their limitation was involved construction activities, and those, in many cases, would involve the issuance of a building permit, but in some cases, they would not. The proposed amendment continues to allow the placement of onsite real estate signs, onsite open house signs, onsite garage sale signs, but it does so in a content-neutral manner. So, there's no change to that. So, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend those changes to 42-506 and 42-508. And just to give you an idea of what we have here and what is indicated in your, what you have up at your places there, the items that are redlined here are the red lines that the Planning Commission reviewed at their public hearing. The items highlighted in yellow were some modifications that Mr. Martin made to help the ordinance be more internally consistent based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So, none of the items there in yellow is a substantive change from what the Planning Commission recommended, but nonetheless, you are not bound by the recommendation of the Planning Commission. It's just a starting point for what you might want to consider. So, again, the main changes that are coming back to you create additional exceptions for the off-site advertising signs from 6:00 a.m. Friday to 6:00 p.m. Sunday with a four-square-foot sign limitation and a four-foot height limitation, and then also allow for contractor or construction signs during that period. And to be consistent with the verbiage and the application, those are being done on a per-frontage basis. And the primary distinction is that if you have a construction sign at your residence, it can be up to eight square feet. If you have a construction sign at Calm Care or Salina Regional Health Center, it can be up to 32 square feet, but the general limitations are the same. And we've also provided you with a table that we can put on the screen, John, if you'd like, and we kind of walk through that, and it's something that may help this be understandable in table form. But we're primarily focusing on the residential districts, and the types of signs that we're allowing is a yard sign. And as a general rule, you get two signs per property. So, if you want to advertise Bull for Kids' Sake, or the Miles for Smiles Run, or whatever you're wanting, or Vacation Bible School, and you want to have those signs in your front yard, you can have two of those signs per property. And then, the additional signage allowed is conditioned on some event or activity that might be taking place. And so, in one case, it may be an election event. In one case, it may be additional sign because you have your property for sale or leased, or you could be having an open house or a garage sale, or you could be having a, some construction activity on your property. But if you take all of those combinations, the proposal is that at any one time, there should be no more than six temporary signs on a property, and that's actually a lot for a residential property. But no one with the city or city staff member is going to tell you what you can display on those signs unless, and the only thing that we're regulating is that one of those extra signs that might relate to a open house or garage sale, or some food that's on sale at an area vendor can only be up from 6:00 a.m. on Friday to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday with some fairly prescriptive sign limitations. So, the primary difference between what you saw in April and sent back on May 15 and today is the allowance for those, one additional temporary advertising sign and one additional temporary business sign if you have some construction activity taking place on your property. And I'd give Mr. Martin a chance to weigh in to see if I've adequately described that, but I think that's a fair statement of where the Planning Commission ended up, not without some discussion and a need for additional explanation. But the primary difference, again, is that back in March, we were telling the Planning Commission, no, you can't have content-based distinctions or exceptions, and so, we have come around to the non-content-based exceptions. But when you go there, you can't dictate what message is conveyed on that advertising sign or on that business sign. I may have a new roof put on my house, and I may want to have an extra sign, but that sign doesn't have to advertise the roofer. It can advertise.
The last category here, then, the advertising sign, would that be the category that would allow someone to put a garage sale down the block sign on their property?
Correct. So, I live in a corner lot. I want to allow my neighbor interior lot to put a sign on my corner. I can do that from 6:00 a.m. Friday through 6:00 p.m. Sunday. And I can, that's advertising an event or product or activity that's taking place not on my property, but on somebody else's property.
And just a little typo on that same one. It says one sign not to exceed four square feet in height. I'm assuming that should just be four feet in height, not four square feet.
Yes, should be four feet in height.
Are there many signs that are six feet high in people's front yards?
No, the only, the only signs that we ran into in that territory was that real estate swing sign, that examples that we gave you. We went out, and there's kind of a standard template for the standard-for-sale sign, and you do get where you have what they call riders or add-ons, where they might have one that says who the agent is, and they might have one that says price reduced and things like that. So, the sign morphs and grows a little bit, but most signs that we measured were less than four square feet. And except for those real estate swing signs, they're, for the most part, less than four square feet. But that, that six-foot height is designed to accommodate the real estate signs that have the arm and the hanging sign.
Under election signs, the earliest display, does that mean 45 days before a primary and 45 days before a general?
Correct.
You don't have to go out and take them out if there's a gap?
Well...
Seven days after, well, there probably not going to be. Well...
Yeah, there is a gap. We went and looked at it. There's a primary in August, and you can have 45 days before that primary, and then the 45 days before the general election starts sometime in September. So, the expectation would be that the signs would be down in that period, or you can decide, that's a policy question to decide otherwise. But the way it's structured is you get them 45 days before the primary, they're removed, and they come back out 45 days before the general, and there would be a gap, at least this year, between the August primary and, I can't remember the exact date, in September, but there's about a six, seven-week period between the primary and when you'd have 45 days before the general.
Seems pretty inconvenient to pull your signs and put it back.
Have to pull them out and take them back and put them back out.
Not that I like looking at any of them.
Well, neither, but...
Four months of signs gets a little obtrusive, too.
Our experience has been that most even successful primary candidates don't leave their signs out all the way through, or the people who've given them permission don't want them out that long.
If I'm content neutral, though, can I put my election sign up between 6:00 a.m. Friday and 6:00 p.m. Sunday all year long if I want to?
Well, if you, if you want to put a sign in your yard that says Dean Andrews is an idiot, you can put that sign in your yard and have it there 365 days a year. It's only, the election signs is, that period's when you get the four additional signs. If you want to have two signs in your yard, and they're both political or election signs, and that's how you choose to use your two signs, you can do that and have them up all the time with no time limit. The 45 days is only, deals with the extra signs.
Your big ones might have been too big.
Unless you want to put all the Democrats in there, you know?
Okay.
You have to choose for a little while.
I got a question, and it's just, I just want to go through Table 1, just to, just to be clear. First thing I'm going to ask is that, does this include, does it include feathered signs? If they're, if they're under six feet tall, if they're...
Not in a residential area. Feathered flags are only allowed in commercial areas.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the general rule, I'm allowed two signs, six feet higher or less, totaling eight square feet total?
Up to eight square feet per sign.
Now, the limitations, and that's just the general rule. What is the limitation on the general? Can they be any type of sign for anything?
They have to be, they have to be non-commercial. They can't be advertising your business signs. So, if, if you want to have a sign that says Bull for Kids' Sake, Run for Smiles for Miles, I support this political party, support the River Project, any of those types of things, you can choose to have one of your two signs out there all the time.
Okay.
So, Bible verses, Vacation Bible School, political...
So, those are your two, and so, when we go to the additional signs table, and I can, during an election, I can have four additional signs, so that means I can have six signs total in my yard?
Correct.
Okay, and so, that means if I'm having construction done, I can have two construction signs?
Per-frontage.
Per-frontage.
One per-frontage, but if you have a corner lot, you could have two?
Commissioner, to be clear, and I'll make sure I'm correct, you can have two extra signs. They wouldn't necessarily have to be construction signs.
Right. I'm just saying, you can, but I'm just giving the number of signs per yard. You could have four, and that is like up until what it says, within 30 days after the construction and up to 180, no more than 180 consecutive days.
Right.
Okay, so that means four signs on the lot. Now, the other two are getting into, if I'm doing an open house, I mean, these aren't cumulative, I mean, I can't have two regular signs and then during the election, four to have six, and then if I'm having somebody work on my house, now I have two more, that's eight, and if I have an open house, then I got another.
You can never have more than six. You have to choose how you want to use them.
Okay, no more than six. Okay.
The footnote at the bottom of that table, the maximum number of signs footnote, I think addresses your question. In no event shall no more than six temporary yard signs be displayed on a residential property at any time.
Okay, now, this one's...
And that's pretty cluttered.
This one's from Ms. Martin. If I'm content neutral and I have to read the sign to understand what it is, how can I say you've, you're over your time limit on these business, you know what I'm saying? If I'm, I have to read the sign to go like, okay, it's one of your generally accepted signs, and it's not...
Well, it was drafted in a way that it was not intended that staff would have to read the sign in order to determine whether the sign must come down. What you must look to is whether the property is undergoing construction or whether the property is still for sale. We're not dictating the message that can or cannot be displayed during that period. So, it does present an issue from the standpoint of fact-checking to see if the eligible event is still happening, or if you're still within the authorized timeframe around that eligible event. But it would not require staff to review the message on the sign to determine compliance.
Because remember, these are, most of these anyway, are triggers to add, to do what you were talking about, which is to cumulatively add signs in your yard up to the maximum of six with any message. So, you could have, you could, I'm going to ask the question, but I believe the way I understand it is, is you could have ongoing construction on your house in which somebody might say, hey, I'll want to see my new windows signed by ABC Construction, or you could choose to put Edith Jo's if you want because you have construction. And it's drawn up that way purposely to try to provide the governing body and the Planning Commission with a way to allow certain things and not to allow others, but it goes back to my overall concern, which is, all it is is trigger signs with, for the most part, with no control over the content anyway, which allows commercial in, but only under certain triggering scenarios at some point. Well, first of all, I don't still know how we're going to enforce that, because, you know, whether, and I don't know if we will enforce it, because I don't know how we can. Now, we can tell if there are more than six signs in a yard. Okay, that's easy. And we know if it's an election season, so we kind of can get that. That helps a little bit. We can tell if they're so big and so tall. That's pretty easy. The rest of it gets really, really hard because so long before garage sales, so long after, I don't know when it was. I don't necessarily know when your open house was either unless I want to dip into the newspapers and go online in the webpages and spend some time trying to figure out when everybody's open house is. And then, I've got signs all over the community, so we're not talking about tracking 10 signs through the year. We're talking about tracking hundreds of signs, maybe thousands of signs through the year. That's, that's why I come back to, partially goes back to Commissioner Hodges' recommendation, which from a, I look at it from an implementation perspective, which is, first of all, I can't think of a commercial message that's any more offensive than what a non-commercial one could be if somebody wants to go that way. That's the first thing. So, I don't see much difference there. I know what we can keep track of, the size and the quantity, but all these timelines are extremely difficult to keep track of. And the fact is, is that if we say you're doing a construction, but you can put a sign that says Edith Jo's, what's the point in that anyway? Almost brings you back to thinking about the quantity and allowing truly content-neutral messaging and not trying to sort of pigeonhole it in.
I think if there's a complaint, the neighbor filing the complaint will have done all that legwork for you. You probably won't have to do it.
Well, what the problem will be is, is we can do legwork on one, and then they're going to say, whoever we follow up on is going to say, hey, look all over town, and they're going to be right. And it's because it's beyond our, it's really beyond our ability to, to regulate in this form. We have a difficult enough time with our regulations today. This is actually very complex. I don't even know that we can explain it to the common citizen so they can understand it, let alone have their time and resources to try to regulate and figure out, your sign is related to which trigger, and when did it occur, and when did it, are you supposed to take it out, and what are we supposed to do, and how much time is it going to take for us to chase it down?
I don't understand it.
Well, to the extent we don't think we had a problem beforehand, we at least now don't have a problem that is compliant with the Supreme Court's ruling. So, they should be happy, we should be happy.
Yeah, but I agree with that. I think that's the intent, and I think the, Aaron and Greg, they've done a good job of putting you there. The question is, is what does it mean from a policy perspective? What does it really mean? It means that we've allowed triggers to basically be fully content-neutral and allow commercial anyway in certain circumstances. So, what's the point from, from my perspective? Because I can't really recommend something that we can't really enforce and administer. And I, they've done a great job trying to get you where you want to be. I just don't think we could administer it fairly or anyway, as a matter of fact, because again, the situation we just talked about, one person complains about another. We go and we say, hey, you're right, you're not supposed to do that, and that person complains about the rest of the community. We can't keep track of it all.
And I think that's been kind of my issue all along. It doesn't appear that we have a problem right now. At least, we don't feel, from what I understand from staff, we don't feel a lot of complaints about it. This is, I mean, and I appreciate the fact, Erin, that you tried to get us to the, to the place we need to be with all the different exceptions. But I think it just kind of leads me back to still being on a real content-neutral basis in that you can have your two signs or your three signs, and here are the sizes that they can be, and what's on those, you know, is your call. So, yeah, this was, this is a pretty, a pretty complicated ordinance, and if it's not enforceable, then I'm not really sure why we go down this path.
The reason we went down this path, if you veer from this path, then you're no longer talking about temporary signs. You're talking about permanent... You're talking about permanent signs, and we're not, we don't, we then won't distinguish between, the whole concept of a temporary sign is that it's only there for a limited duration. But if, if you go to the truly content-neutral, not tied to an event, not tied to any time limits, then what you're really talking about is permanent signs, not temporary signs.
Well, I can see putting a time limit to it as well, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Mike, but I mean, yeah, if you want to talk about number, size, duration, and I realize duration's going to be something that's going to be pretty hard to track too, because if someone removes a sign for a day and then puts it back out, but just, just my thoughts.
Just to clarify, and Commissioner, I interrupted, so I apologize. I think, and I'm looking to Aaron and Dean on this, but I think we could, if you're so inclined, provide a numeric cap for temporary signs, and have it be more open-ended. And by doing that, if it turns out that you want to revise the policy, there are at least temporary signs that don't have any vested right to continue. They haven't become a permanent sign that we have to account for forever. So, in the event that you take the, the open-ended approach and decide later that we're being overwhelmed with signs, we want to dial that back, if those signs are temporary, then you still have the ability to cycle them out of the community as an expiration occurs.
Well, on section 42-508, subsection A1, says, "Two yard signs may be placed and displayed on an individual residential lot in any RSR, R1, R2, R2.5, R3, or MH residential zoning district." Yard signs are one category of a temporary sign, right?
That's correct.
Is there any time limit on those two signs?
Nope.
The two base signs, there isn't, is there?
But they're, they're non-commercial signs. They're not commercial signs.
So, if there was a commercial message on those signs, would we have the authority under content-neutral to remove those signs or cause them to be removed?
If we go to a truly content-neutral approach, then we don't care what's on those two yard signs that are up.
Well, let me reword that. Would the current Supreme Court ruling that addresses content-neutral in the context we're talking about today allow us to remove commercial messaging on those two yard signs per lot, if we wanted to do that?
Yes, we, we determine that we can distinguish between commercial and non-commercial speech, and the ordinance does that, but it then goes on to make certain exceptions to the general prohibition on commercial signage.
So, the two base signs are residential speech signs that actually could be in place, in essence, permanently. There's no timeline, time restraints on those two signs. And it's the additional signs we've been talking about that are allowing in the forms of commercial speech.
Commercial exception signs that were...
That are temporary in, in time.
Temporary in nature, and tied to events or activities.
And if I could clarify...
So, even a real estate sign is considered to be a commercial sign, and so if you said you can have two signs, as long as they're non-commercial, that's it, then you'd essentially be prohibiting real estate signs. So, you either have to allow all signs, commercial, non-commercial, allow only non-commercial, or take the hybrid approach where you have non-content-based exceptions and still try to have some protection of residential areas from those signs. There are communities that have taken that approach, but some of them are fairly frightening in terms of their enforcement. For instance, in Centennial, Colorado, you can put up two signs, and it doesn't matter what they say, but if they're made of foam or plastic, they can be up for this long, and if they're made of cardboard, they can be up for this long, and if they're a flag, they can be up for this long, and you have to get a permit for every temporary sign that you put up, so.
You know what, I, I, going back to that real estate and the, I, I still go back to, I think that staff, legal counsel, and the planning commission had it right on the first go-round. I mean, it's a difficult, one, it's a difficult ordinance to craft because of that Supreme Court ruling, but I think the clear distinction on the commercial side of the thing which brings in the real estate is we're talking onsite. It's the onsite. It's so you're not advertising Jim's Roofing Service, who is located on South Broadway, when you're over on East Crawford. So, I, I think that, and I think once we start trying to carve out the exceptions, I, I agree, and it's, and it's why I voted against sending it back to the planning commission, is that it is barely enforceable, and most definitely, it will require selective enforcement, which I think is going to lead to the problems that Mr. Gates, that you stated. Hey, they're doing it, how come I can't do it? And I got to tell you, we got to remember what we're talking about here. We're talking about signs in residential neighborhoods. This is where, these are where people are living, and they're parking on the street already, and it's like, you know what, they're not driving down expecting to see a sign up on a, on a pole. You've got kids playing in neighborhoods and everything else. I don't know what advertising message people think they're going to be missing out on by not having off-premises, commercial signs in a residential neighborhood. I think it devalues neighborhoods, and again, it's, I, I think we had it right on the first go-round.
I don't think we had a problem. The problem was brought to us by another body outside the state of Kansas. I don't think we're going to create a problem with this, because it wasn't a problem to begin with. But if, you know, if you look at the practical application, this, you know, if, you know, real estate's important, to the extent the sign's set up all year long. I mean, if I wanted to find out who was putting a, doing a good job on a roof, I could go to the Yellow Pages. What am I more likely to do? Keep driving down the street till I see somebody's house getting a roof put on? I mean, it's the practical way we, we do business. I mean, this, I think this is a good compromise. You know, the two easy things that are to enforce, the number of signs and the size. You know, there is a sign that says you can't go more than 40 miles an hour on, on Ohio Street. Very selective enforcement. No, you know, you could walk in and say, well, everybody else is doing it. Chances are, you're still getting a ticket. And I don't, I don't know if we should make this bigger than what it is. I mean, at least not until it becomes a problem. We can always revisit it.
The challenge is what is practical is not legal, and what's legal is not practical.
Right, exactly.
So, we're, we're giving you something that's legal, but it's not practical.
It's a good compromise.
If we said you had three signs, and you can have any form of message, except through an election season, then you get to add three more, and then you still get to put any kind of message. That would be easy, because we know when you have, can have up to three, and we know when you can have up to six. I'm just throwing those numbers out. In this scenario, we know you can have two all the time, so that's pretty easy, and we know that they have to be residential message, so we have to remember, if you only have two, absent a trigger event, okay, absent a trigger event, because you might decide not to have one of your two base and, and actually throw in one of your temporary with trigger event, and I don't, we're going to have to check that. The trigger event is to allow a commercial sign, because that was the request to do that, which is fine, except the sign doesn't even have to relate to the trigger event, and the trigger event creates timelines that are going to be difficult for us to track down, because the election one is easy, the other ones are going to be exceptionally difficult when the finger gets pointed to all the other signs in town. And we have, really, at that point, if we're going to enforce one, we're expected to go follow up on every single other sign, find the sign, talk to the person, figure out if there's a trigger event, when it happened, and move forward. Otherwise, we enforce them all, in order to be fair with enforcement. And that's really going to be cumbersome because of the trigger event and the timelines associated with it.
Right.
But I, I, you know, as an analogy, our, our housing code, you know, the, the garbage and trash that people have in their front houses, we don't go enforce unless there's a complaint. And I think that's a bigger problem than this signs thing is ever going to be. You know, we respond when a neighbor makes enough calls and, and a complaint, and the builder inspector goes out. But if we were just to go driving around town, you could probably give out citations all day long for, for violations of the code.
Well, it wouldn't be well, well-received, but in, if you really want a clean community, we actually should be doing that. We're just not staffed to do that right now.
And we're certainly not staffed to, which is why, we're, we're not staffed to do code enforcement on, on the signs as, as we're looking at. Let me ask just a real quick question, and then I want to, I want to, I kind of want to pose a question to you after I get an answer to this. We have time limitations that say 6:00 AM Friday to 6:00 PM Sunday. Now, for all practical purposes, if we say staff works eight to five, why don't we just make it anytime after 5:00 PM on Thursday, and Monday morning till 8:00 AM? Because no one's going to be around to enforce it in any times other than those. And so, if you're going Monday, mon, so, so from, you, you got to have all your signs down and put away between Monday at 8:00 AM and, and Thursday at 5:00 PM. And if nobody thinks that it's going to cause any problem at all, why don't we just say, to make things easier, why don't you just allow two commercial signs without any of the triggers and anything else? Because, you know, after all, we're trusting that everybody will self-regulate, and it won't be a problem. So, my question is, is why limit it to just the weekends? I mean, if it's not a problem on the weekends, why is it a problem during the week? In fact, I would argue that I'd rather have those signs up during the week when I'm gone most of the time, when it's daylight and stuff, and I don't have to look at them. And then on the weekends, when I'm home, my neighborhood isn't junked up with a bunch of signs. So, why, why, if it's good for the weekend, isn't it good for all week long?
Well, I, I was actually going to ask, what if you want to have a yard sale during the week? I don't know if anybody ever does that, but...
Well, you can have on-premises sign anytime you want. If you're having a garage sale, you can put the garage sale on your sign, on your lot, any day of the week you want, for however long you want. It's just that you can't do it off-premises. Yeah.
Well, you know, my initial, you know, the, the one decision that based all the other actions off of was, do we want to have commercial signage in residential neighborhoods? And my answer to that was, with few exceptions, no. And that's where I thought most of us were. And if that's our starting point, then, you know, what few practical exceptions are there, you know, that we should consider allowing to not be deemed the ultimate Scrooge in the history of the state of Kansas? You know, I know Girl Scouts are untouchable, and I imagine garage sales are pretty close.
And a lot of those could still be allowed. Nonprofits don't constitute commercial speech. So, your Big Brothers, your Girl Scouts, your Boy Scouts, your, don't want to leave the Campfire Girls out, but any of those things are non, considered non-commercial speech.
Garage sales are considered commercial, if I'm understanding this correctly.
And this whole, this whole premise of what we're doing is based on the assumption that there's a preference for keeping general commercial signs out of residential neighborhoods. If there is no preference for that, then it doesn't make any sense to try to create all these exceptions. If, if there is not a concern about having commercial signs in a residential setting, then just taking the strict numerical approach with, without regard to content is clearly the easiest to enforce. It's just everyone has to be on board with commercial signage in residential areas.
Commissioner, you asked about the garage sale sign on premise, and the answer is, is if you use the garage sale trigger, that's an on-premise sign. But if you use the one temporary advertising sign trigger, or you get your neighbor to, or they can do the Friday morning through Sunday evening, they could put your garage sale sign on their property during that time, if, if they wished to do that. So, in that case, it can be an off-premise. That's the exception with that advertising piece.
And not to nitpick, but if there were two garage sales in that block, that person on the corner could only have one off...
I'll look at Aaron, but I believe that's true.
Because they'd be limited to one...
As it's written, it allows one off-site advertising sign per property during the hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the weekend.
The interesting, and I think that's intended, I think most of your garage sales, garage sales are on Friday and Saturday. I don't know if there are many Thursday garage sales. If there are, those signs would be in violation of, of, if they're using that off-site advertising piece, they'll be in violation. If it's just an onsite sign using the garage sale piece, I think they'll be fine. So, it all depends.
Well, I think we're passing, we're talking about passing something that we can't, can't enforce.
If it's helpful, I just wanted to point out, the, the two tables that were included in your packet, and I think that's the first one. John, is that correct? Okay, so, there's, there's four rows there, and I think that's what's causing some of the uncertainty and discussion. Those are all prompted by the need to, to tell owners, you get an additional sign if, if you're in this timeframe, or if this event is happening. That initially, it was drafted that way because we established the baseline, two signs, which was not deemed adequate during an election season, for example, or during the, the period that a property is marketed for sale or an open house. So, the, the baseline two allocation is really what necessitates those additional, admittedly complex rules that we've illustrated in that table. So, it's drafted that way, if, if you were to say, we want to get rid of all of those additional rules that create relief valves during certain events, but you wanted to accommodate those events nonetheless, then it would probably involve re-looking at the baseline of two, taking it up to where you're comfortable, and then eliminating the, the allowances. But we obviously haven't done that, but I just wanted to explain that is what that table illustrates, all those different relief valves. And then on the second page, the second table illustrates the relief valves we, we've created for exceptions to the commercial speech prohibition. And again, that was prompted by the, the direction to generally prohibit commercial speech, but a desire to accommodate it during certain events. And as we discussed, and as we outlined in our memo, we weren't able to get comfortable advising from a legal perspective that we could say, you get this content-based exception, or you get a, you get a garage sale sign, or you get an open house sign. We had to approach it from a content-neutral manner, which meant creating relief valves tied to certain events. And so, that's, that's why that additional complex set of rules was necessitated on that table.
Quick question, the, the temporary business sign, the, under construction activity, obviously, that's, this construction activity at your home is a trigger. The temporary business sign is, is a commercial-related sign. Is that also the same? Would that, could you, would that be advertising as well in that particular sign?
We have...
It would be, wouldn't it? Because it's intended to anyway, isn't it?
We have drafted this in a way that your traditional construction sign, which, which displays the name of the builder, for example, would be defined, would fall within the definition of a business sign, because it is displaying the name of a business who's performing activity or selling goods or services on the property on which the sign is displayed.
Let me ask this question. For, for those who own a home, when do you actually stop constructing anything? That's the first question. Okay, you don't have to answer, that's rhetorical. So, I always can justify a project going on, because this is, this is written pretty open-ended, and it probably should be, because you don't want to be putting in 50, 50 more definitions here. But it says, "One temporary business sign may be displayed per street frontage on a property when construction activities, activities of any type," which maybe could be demolition as well, I don't know, "are being actively performed on the property." Okay, it doesn't say by a contractor, okay, so I'm, I do it myself, or I've always got a project going. So, I presumably have the ability to put that temporary business sign out front, and it could have any business message on it, couldn't it?
No, because that would be an advertising sign.
That was why I asked the question, between a business sign and an advertising sign.
Advertising sign is something that promotes a business activity or product that is not associated with the location of the sign, whereas a business sign is advertising something that's taking place on the premises.
This, well, okay, do we, we don't have a definition of the business sign, do we? I'm sorry, where is it?
It's on page three of the ordinance. But that is the, that's not a change from our, our present sign code distinguishes between business signs and advertising signs.
We did amend the definition of business sign to pick up construction activities or the sale of, of the property on which the sign is placed.
I didn't go back to that set of definitions. I went to the set ahead of, or further out from that. So, that does, it is specific to being on-premise.
So, if you were doing it...
Is that an issue? Do you think because we are in a commercial area, we can go ahead and regulate that? There's no question about it. So, it'd have to be, it could be a pet grooming, even though my house is under construction, right?
Well, the allowance is...
If I do the pet grooming on the property.
If, if you do pet grooming on the property, and you have a home occupation license for that, you would likely qualify for the business sign during that period where your home is under construction.
What if, what if someone comes to my house and grooms my dog? Can I put their thing? Or is it just the construction of my house? I mean, are we going to limit it to what business you're in?
That's not a construction activity.
You know what I mean? What if a guy comes and works... What if a guy comes and works on my computers?
Well, we, we, as it's currently written, it, it would not pick up that example of a, of a dog groomer that comes to your house. We did not define construction activity. We did present the planning commission with an option that limited it to building permit approved construction projects, so that the city could independently verify the commencement date and, and the fact that construction was actually happening. That option was not selected.
So if my construction work does not trigger a building permit, I can't put up a sign?
Well, it would have been that way had the, had the language that we provided as an option been selected, but it was not selected, and we just went with the language that says, when construction activity is taking place. It's no longer tied to the issuance of a building permit.
So if Cox, if Cox Cable comes in and installs cable in my house, they can have their sign up in my yard for 30 days? I mean, they could say, hey, I'll cut, you know, for the first six months, I'll cut $20, $20 off your bill if you let me keep my sign up in your yard.
Yeah, because this says, where the commodity, product, service, activity, or event that is conducted, sold, occurring, offered, or manufactured on or to the sale or lease of property on the premises where the sign is located. So presumably, I, I guess it's a good question. If, if your pet groomer came to your house to do it, they're conducting a business, it doesn't say that it has to be you, and your general contractor isn't you. It's, it's happening there. It's the same thing. That would be allowable, I would think, wouldn't it? It's because the construction activity is the trigger.
There is, in that example, there is a legitimate construction activity taking place, but, but the owner would, would...
But the sign doesn't have to reflect it, as long as there is a business activity.
That was, we talked about potential unintended consequences with the content-neutral approach, and that, that may be a good example of, we can't say, you must use the sign to display your contractor, your architect. So, so that's a potential unintended consequence.
But in Mr. Gage's example, the groomer would have to be performing this construction on the house, and the dog groomer wants to put a sign up.
Yeah, the construction of the house is the trigger, some form of construction, it doesn't say who has to do it, is the trigger for allowing the additional sign. The intent and thought of the sign is, because some people like to say, hey, look at my windows, contractor A B C is doing it. However, the requirement on the business sign says, a sign displaying a commercial message that directs attention to a business, commodity, product, service, activity, or event that is conducted, sold, occurring, offered, or manufacturing, manufactured on or to the sale or lease of property on the premises where the sign is located to which it is affixed. So it doesn't topically get you to the construction activity only.
So you truly have to read that sign to know if it fits that definition.
Right.
Arguably, that sign could be an advertising sign, except to the extent that that business is being performed onsite. So for a limited period, a limited, a limited period, that may actually be possible. But once that work stops being performed, and you're just advertising an off-site business, it's, it's, it meets the definition of an advertising sign, which wouldn't be allowed.
One thing that this doesn't do, that you're going to run into, I guarantee you 100%, we will run into this, you can drive around town all day long, and you will see boat for sale, car for sale, motorcycle for sale, something like that for sale. Under this, I believe that would have to be addressed during the weekend hours with that advertising sign. Is that accurate?
Is it, is it an onsite?
Yeah, it's onsite, like my own motorcycle for sale, I love it now, you know, wife says I have to get rid of it. So I put it out in the driveway.
That sounds like a remarkably specific example.
No male does that on their own, I'll just tell you. Yeah, it's not presuming a business activity, it's a personal item that I want to sell. It's not a garage sale. Now, if you did a garage sale, you're into the garage sale timeframe presumably, if it fits under that. But absent that, you would have the weekend activ, the business activity sign timeframe, wouldn't you?
Yes, that would be a commercial sign, because you're advertising the, the sale of goods or equipment. And so that would generally be subject to the prohibition of commercial signs in residential districts unless one of the exceptions could be identified. We do not have an exception for the sale of one item. We do have an exception for a garage sale. So I don't, we do have the, the term garage sale defined in the zoning code, but I don't believe that the sale of one's boat meets the definition of a garage sale. And we haven't changed that, so I don't believe that's currently allowed, but it, but it does happen.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. And the garage sale has a specific quantity limit and, and number of days limit, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if it takes me four weeks for somebody to buy my motorcycle, my car, my whatever that is, I'm going to be in violation pretty soon, pretty quickly. You're going to have that.
You can open the garage door and put your motorcycle inside the garage.
Yeah. My point is, is you're going to have that throughout the community at some point, and there's questions, do you want us to enforce that? Where someone says, right or wrong, I don't even know if it was allowed. I think Dean could tell us if it was allowed before. But I've always been able to sell my personal property, not as a business, in an ongoing way, but that thing that I wanted to get rid of, for the most part, can't do that anymore.
Are these, but we're talking about yard signs? Because most car for-sale signs are in the back window of the vehicle.
I'm assuming if the vehicle's on the property, it's going to be a...
Correct.
That's not a yard sale, that's not a yard sign.
That's not a yard sign, and we wouldn't consider that a sign if it was affixed to a vehicle that was moving. If you parked your car in your driveway and you had a for-sale sign in the back window, that would not be considered a sign, and it would not be regulated under this.
So could I put any message on the back, in my vehicle in the window?
Sure.
People do.
We have plumbers, electricians, we have all kinds of people that park their cars in their driveway, and they have signs on them.
Those are commercial messages.
But they're vehicles, they're not signs.
They're not considered a temporary...
I know how we characterize them, but they do the same thing. They present a message on property through their vehicles versus on poles.
They're not a yard, temporary yard sign.
Yeah.
This, this ordinance, there's, there's a number of other types of signs that I think we'll be addressing in the future, but this ordinance only addresses temporary signs, and specifically, when we're talking about residential districts, yard signs. So those are freestanding, temporary plywood, cardboard, metal signs.
Hopefully, they're temporary location signs in there.
So, so if they put the small temporary sign in front of the motorcycle in the ground for too long a period of time, and we go to regulate that, we simply tell them to move the sign up to the motorcycle and to fix it, and they're okay, right? I mean, that's the, that's...
Most people would probably put the sign on the motorcycle.
I've seen both ways.
Some, yeah, I've seen both ways.
But that would be the resolution, wouldn't it? Because even though it's doing the same thing, if you put it on the motorcycle, which is a vehicle, you're probably okay.
Put it in the windshield.
Which doesn't make any sense whatsoever when you're thinking about equal application of this, it's just trying to fit it into what they can and can't do.
I think, I think Dean hit it on, on the head earlier, and, and I'm going to try to paraphrase you, and I might not, might not do it correctly, so, but I feel like, you know, we have like the three different options at this point. We go content neutral, and just limit the number, size, and duration, or, you know, whatever can be measured objectively. Or we basically prohibit all commercial signs in a neighborhood with the exception of a for-sale sign. Or you've got this hybrid approach, which it's, it's, it's just, there's just too many exceptions and too many what-ifs to, to, to make that any kind of an enforceable ordinance, in my opinion.
In theory, though, the only problem with that is, the for-sale sign does not have to say for-sale. So it really doesn't solve the issue of the content, whether it's commercial or not.
I thought we were, I thought we were okay with the, with a, with a for-sale sign.
Triggered by the event of the house being for-sale, but the sign does not have to say, house for sale.
The real estate signs are somewhat unique in that we do have the benefit of a United States Supreme Court decision that recognizes the importance and, and authorizes essentially the creation of a specific content-based exception for onsite real estate signs. So we...
So that, that is, that content's allowed.
We could create a specific content-based exception for real estate signs. Likely, we do not have the benefit of a Supreme Court case, but the onsite open house sign, and arguably, the onsite garage sale sign could be approached in that same manner, although we did, again, we do not have the benefit of a Supreme Court decision. I think we outlined that in the, in the memo that was presented. But we could, we could do that. And what, what was, what was presenting the, the issue that caused us to go back and rework that option, too, as we presented it at the time, was the desire to, in a content-neutral fashion, accommodate off-site varieties of those signs and the construction sign category.
I'd be willing to give up the, the off-site sign, but I think you're going to get a big pushback from the small contractors. I mean, if you're going to start creating exceptions, I mean, that's probably the one group. I think, the way this is crafted right now, it's not harming anybody. I don't see it as overtly discriminatory against any particular group who puts up signs on a regular basis now, anyway. But, but once we go down the exception road, it's hard to figure out who's important and who isn't, but certainly heard from the small contractors and...
On the real estate signs, the off-site sign would be handled through the, let's see here, the Friday through Sunday approach, right?
Correct.
But the signs, there's a few directional signs around town where a house may be down a block and over a block, that are, have been put there on a semi-permanent basis while the house is for sale, that basically say, house for sale, and it's an arrow. Those are longer-term, those are coming up unless they're just put there on the weekend, I presume. Well, I don't know if they're coming up, they should come up because they're in violation of your code.
If they're in the right of way, they got, supposed to come up anyway.
You've got to remember something, when you're talking about, when you're, when you're actually talking about the enforcement of this, okay. It goes back to, we enforce, generally speaking, what we think we have the capacity to enforce when you're thinking about volume. But you make me swear to uphold the laws, and I have to have my other staff do that. So if I have a staff person on duty, and I know that they drove by, an obvious violation, and they had time to stop, I expect them to stop, because they're obligated to stop. That's part of our obligation to enforce our codes. And I, and from a, from a governing body perspective, whatever position and perspectives you guys have today, and they, they may not match today, they're going to be different tomorrow with different people, and that's going to flip-flop and be all over the place. Now we're going to enforce. Well, tomorrow, we're not going to enforce. When are we going to enforce? Part of that's why you have an enforceable code, and you think about the code context, and whether it's practical and enforceable, and it meets the requirements. And then later, a governing body can change the code. In this case, it's going to be an issue of, do we enforce or not? Because it's going to be really difficult to enforce, but we may get a governing body that says, no matter what, that's the way the code is enforced. We're actually obligated to do that if we have the time to do it outside of other enforcement. Puts staff in a bit of a predicament as well. It's not intentional, it's just, that's, could be the situation we have if there's any expectation of real enforcement of this. It's just the way it is. And there's, I wish I had a better option, because you're right, it was brought to us by the United States Supreme Court. We're trying to figure out a way to be semi-flexible, and that's where this law is really difficult, is trying to be semi-flexible. The law kind of likes you to be totally inflexible or completely flexible. That's the way it's really, in a way, crafted. So to be semi-flexible, again, these guys have done a good job trying to put you there, but from a practical perspective, it's really hard to deal with. That's, that's just what you have to contemplate.
People, I, people won't understand this. I mean...
Well, I guess the other approach is, for, right now, for someone to have a commercial sign in their yard, they would have to agree to allow that sign to be there. And riding around town, most people don't have commercial signs in their yards. I mean, you could just say, two and six, and take your chances. I don't know that people would take advantage of it just because they, they could. Most people would say, well, I wouldn't want that in my yard anyway, and, because most houses, at least most of the yards I've seen that slide, don't have any signs at all. But...
Well, if we're not, if we're not going to, if we're going to create a law and not enforce it, I'm, I'm completely against that. Let's just pass a resolution that asks people to only do this. I mean, because really, I mean, it's like, let's, I, I just philosophically have a problem with, with creating laws that we have no ability or intention of enforcing. It's, we've got enough laws, I mean, it's...
And we can, we can, we have the ability to enforce to a degree, and, and certainly, we're going to have to have the intention, because no one's going to admit, we don't have the intention to enforce. We have to have the intention to enforce. We're not going to be that effective, because we're going to, to do it well, we'll chase a lot of paths here, I believe.
Well, and I agree, and I think I just go back to, we're talking about residential neighborhoods, and if I, if one of my charges that's sitting in this chair is to, is to protect property values in this community, I'm not so worried about the business owner that says, geez, I'm putting a new roof on that guy's house, I want to be able to advertise it. I'm concerned more about the resident who doesn't, who doesn't have that desire or pressure to put that sign in their yard, but that wants to have a clean, nice, aesthetically pleasing neighborhood to live in. And so that's why I, it kind of falls down on, I think more people would want me to help to protect their residential property values, which is why I don't like the, hey, let it, anything goes approach, even if that's on the weekend, so.
So is that in favor of...
Yeah. So is that a yes or a no?
I'll go back and say, so I will be voting against this. I, I still was with the original decision that came from planning, came through planning commission from staff and legal counsel the first time. I, I think we had it right the first time.
Which, very quickly, the, the big difference between that and this is...
The only difference was, is that very limited scope in commercial signage for on-premises only. So it allowed the for-sale signs, it allowed the on-premises, um, open house signs, it allowed the on-premises garage sale signs. It didn't open it up to, hey, I'm going to put my garage sale sign down on that corner, or I'm going to put it off-premises, or, and the one casualty I see, and, and, and I wish it weren't so, because quite frankly, I don't believe it's a cancer on neighborhoods, is that, is the, hey, some guy did work on my house, he's going to put his sign there for however long he wants to do it. That's the one casualty. And so I have to say, pretty much, I'd rather err on the side of maintaining personal property values, rather than saying, someone gets left out because of this Supreme Court decision. I'd rather the residents in a residential neighborhood don't take the brunt of that.
I understand what you're saying, and I really think it does come down to the two realistic options. Either Team Hodges, where, where, where any, where anything goes, or you have the very narrow exceptions to the commercial signs. And, but I agree, if, if this is an ordinance that, that we can enforce, and when we're not, you know, there's just, there's just no way, we just don't have the luxury of having sign police roaming our, our streets. And, you know, to John's point, I mean, I think that that's just a, a call that we'll have to make in terms of whether or not residential areas would be, would be harmed by the appearance of, of commercial signs that are, I guess, you know, advertising anything, versus, you know, having those signs there to support businesses that want to display them. But at any rate, yeah, I don't think that I can vote for, for this ordinance, because I feel like we need to go either one way or the other. And this, I just don't see this middle ground as, as, as doing anything but creating more problems for staff.
That's the one, as Mr. Scragg pointed out, the one, the one advantage of the Team Hodges approach is that it's, it would be the most clear and most easily enforceable, because then we're only looking at numerical size and height violations. That's absolutely the cleanest and easiest to enforce. But we, we sensed a reluctance to give up on the, the commercial, non-commercial distinction. But there is no doubt that your approach is the most practical from an enforcement and understandability standpoint, and then it's just a matter of arriving at the right number, the right size limitation, and, and that standpoint. The other advantage of that is that you can, if it, that approach is taken, and there turns out to be problems, you can always go back and revisit it, but...
And you can all point in my direction.
Well, with that, if over time, there came to be a practical solution to the onsite advertising of work being done at that time, it could be considered later and added to this.
Let me just add this, and this will be my last thing to, to add on this. I've heard a lot of talk of saying, there's no problem, it's not broken, you know, and we're only here to fix it. The closest thing we have now, or the closest thing, choice we have to what we have now, is the thing that was brought to us. It's, it's what was brought to us. Quite frankly, it's like, you know what? People put their open house signs on the corners all the time. Do we pick them up? Maybe every now and then? But it's kind of like the guy driving 55 or... But it's kind of like the guy driving 55 or 50 miles an hour down Ohio. Is he going to get pulled over every time? No, he's not. But that driver takes a chance of saying, I know what the law is, and I'm not going to abide by the law. I'm going to take my chance on it. The same thing with any of those other signs that go in there. You don't have unintended consequences of just anything goes. I guarantee you, if you go with the anything goes, it will be so regretted. And it will be, it'll be a huge mistake. The closest thing we have, if we say, it's not broke, let's don't worry and fix it, is to say, let's do what came to us the first time and do it that way. Because people are still going to put their extra signs out there. They're still going to put their open-house signs in the right-of-way. I mean, that's the thing. Most of these signs are in the right-of-way, anyway. I mean, we have a hard enough time enforcing on the location of the sign, because it's so prevalently misplaced. That if we really want to get to the closest thing to what we have now, I think it's the onsite-only commercial signs.
If we don't, if we don't agree to pass this, do we have to go back to the Planning Commission again? How does that work?
No, at this point, the ordinance may be amended or revised by a simple majority of the governing body. It's already been back to the Planning Commission once. Initially, it required a supermajority vote, but now, a simple majority can make whatever modifications are desired.
Okay.
I would note that if we do go back, depending on where you end up, if there's a desire to go back and look at the other version, we could bring that back at the following week. And then the other thing I was going to mention is, we did spend a lot of time trying to make this as simple as possible. And I apologize if we weren't able to do a better job. But Greg and I attended a continuing education last week. And Chuck Thompson, the executive director of the International Municipal Lawyers Association, presented one hour on sign codes and the state of the law. And it confirmed that we are dealing with tough issues, and there's not a simple solution that we were missing. So we would like to be able to make it easier. But that was the easiest and only approach we could come up with that implemented that option, too, that we talked about at the last City Commission meeting.
My experience is that most communities in Kansas are sitting back and watching us stick our neck out and wait to see what we do, because most communities have this in their too-hard pile. But when you have a Supreme Court decision, it's hard to ignore this and leave it in the too-hard pile. But it is, it's not, it's not an easy thing. It's not easy for staff. It's not easy from an enforcement or practicality standpoint. But I think Aaron's done a great job of taking the parameters and direction he was given and doing what the Supreme Court will allow us to do.
I think he has, too, and I appreciate all the hard work, because... But I just, I just feel like that if, I don't really understand all of this. And I don't think any of us do. I don't know how the citizen is going to understand and...
What I'm hearing from, I think that's the West End down there.
The West End. Yeah, that's the West End.
Is we take a very simple, basic policy now, we can tweak it later, which might be easier than having a complex one and trying to trim it back.
I guess, and it would take three of you to agree, but one approach that we could take is, and I don't think it would take too much work, that we could bring back the original Planning Commission recommendation that you looked at April 17th and revisit that. We could also take a crack at preparing something that is purely content-neutral and only deals with the numerical limit, size limit, and height limit. And say, here's two alternative paths, and let you look at that and decide if you think what we've got for you today is too complex and not palatable.
I think that's a good idea. And it's not waste of worry. I mean, we've had the benefit of open discussion. You'll be on the speaker circuit for this issue all around the court, all around the state.
That's for sure.
Well, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask just a question anyway. Now, this did pass, the original one did pass on first reading. So I can't just simply make a motion to, on second reading, approve what we approved on first reading.
Well, going to look over to Greg on his thoughts on that. I think we had approached this and indicated in the blue sheet that it was being presented as a first reading, just thinking that because of the magnitude of the changes, it would, we would run the drill on first and second reading. We could, if there's a desire to do that. The reason I suggested we might at least postpone it a week was to make sure that there weren't any other changes that were made in the last go-around that we wanted to potentially retain, because there were some other clarifications that were made at the last Planning Commission meeting, that nearly all of which were aimed at dealing with commercial speech. But I wanted to, thought it'd be useful to take one final pass and see if there was anything else worth salvaging from that.
Well, Commissioner Davis, do you want to make a motion, then?
I'd really like to make this motion next week, but I guess we're going to have to do something with it today here.
I think we have to. We've been working on this for almost 45 minutes, so, this time.
I actually like Mr. Andrew's idea, but I'm not sure how to place that in...
Yeah.
That would address this ordinance issue we have in front of us.
Yeah. How did you say that, Mr. Andrew?
Well, it's basically taking, on the one hand, going back to the draft of the ordinance that you reviewed on April 17th, presenting that as one alternative. And then us going back through here and basically stripping out the exception language, the non-commercial, commercial exceptions, and showing you what a truly content-neutral regulation would be that only dealt with numerical size and height limits, so that you could compare and contrast the two.
And I'm fine with that. I'm fine with this one as it is. But if you could bring back two improved models, as long as you don't get lost discussing between those two models, if we can agree that, okay, one of these is going to prevail. I think we spent enough time on this.
I don't know that that could occur. It'd be fairly easy to produce, reproduce what was given to you on April 17th. It might be a little more time-consuming to go in and make this a purely content-neutral approach, but it's more, it's mostly a matter of subtraction, isn't it, Aaron?
There would be a lot of simply deleting text and clarifying that the, whatever base allocation we allow is commercial or non-commercial. Take your pick. I wanted to clarify, is there a desire to move away from or modify the additional signage rules, as it currently is written? We have two allowed. And then you can get yourself up to six as a property owner if there's certain events happening. Shall we retain that?
Can I ask a question? Because I get where you're going with on that. And I just got a question for the board. What council did and what staff did is what you guys all asked them to do. So now, we're here doing it, and it's like everybody wants to walk away from it. I don't want to, I don't want to come back next week or another time and do this. We need to take care of it today.
What if we take care, what if we talk about accepting the one that Mr. Andrew talked about, the one that was brought to us on, I think, the 17th? Was it April 17th?
Well, I mean, we have, well, I think we have that choice.
We have that choice. Then let's just go with that choice.
We have the choice with today. Well, that choice, when we had it, it's like we said, we want this choice. And now that we have this choice, we're saying, we want something else. All I'm trying to get at is, can we get to a point where we don't send something back to the Planning Commission, and we don't kick this can down the road? It's, it's...
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, it's, I appreciate that you guys did exactly, I think, what was asked for. Now, I've got my concerns with that, and I think, I'm pretty clear with that. I think Commissioner Ryan's pretty clear on, he's ready to, you're in favor of this one. You're ready to vote on this one.
I'm fine with this one.
And I appreciate that. I mean, we're a deliberative board. We're deliberating. Let's figure out if someone has a motion, if someone's comfortable with seconding it or move to that. Dean, how many votes does it take if we decided, as the mayor said, to go back to the original one? No, to override the planning commissions and just say, hey, what option is that? Make modifications and...
You're not overriding the planning commission. You're overriding yourself.
Right. We're overriding ourselves. We're not overriding the, we don't have to go back to the Planning Commission on this.
Well, you know, when I read this before, it sounded good. But now, I've had the benefit of discussion.
Some deliberation.
Deliberation. And I can, you know, I see the validity of different points of view. I mean, what I would really love would just be a week to think about it. I would personally be in favor of just tabling this for a week. It's like coming out and trying to recount everything you hear in a lecture right after the lecture. Just, for me, it's hard to, I have to sleep on it. Then I can talk about it the next day, right? Because we're trying to get it, we're trying to get it right. We're trying to get it perfect.
I don't think we're ever going to get, I don't think anybody's going to understand this. I just don't think they are. And I don't think they're going to be able to enforce it here at the city. I just don't. I think it's too many ifs, ands, and buts in it. That's what I think.
And what Commissioner... Having an Alzheimer's moment. What's your last name, John? Commissioner Blamford should say. Is that, you know, if we know it's not enforceable, why enact it? You know, my approach that would be, well, if it's not doing any harm, there's no harm in doing it. That may not be a good enough reason to pass something, just because it's not going to do any harm. But just heard a lot of different points of view, which me, right now, just a little...
I don't think there's any right or wrong. I think it's just whatever your preference is and how open you want things to be.
The only thing I want to protect was limiting commercial signs in residential neighborhoods.
Then you're definitely not on Team Hodges.
Right.
Yes, then you're, you're with Team Hodges.
I just think if we're 10 minutes away from busting through this, I'd rather sit here and talk about this, rather than come back next week and have staff spend a whole lot of time and put together another staff report. It's like, if your main concern is limiting as much commercial speech signs in residential neighborhoods, then I think you're back to the first option we had.
The first option, right.
Because there's no perfect one. You're going to have to leave something out or allow a whole lot.
Right. But when I first heard this, I had a problem with the issue of limiting signage based on content, even though you say you're content-neutral. So, you know, my basic approach would be, you either limit them or you don't. If you don't limit the content, then you're up, you're leaving it to the homeowner to decide what goes on their sign, which I think, in this city, would provide reasonable controls. But now, I sense that you had some worry about the commercial signs in residential neighborhoods. Yeah, that read you wrong. You do.
I do. And that's all, and all I'm trying to get at by saying we can deliberate here is that we got three options. If we have, option one is the first thing that came to us. Option two is the thing we have today. And option three is anything goes. Now, I can tell you this. I'm on one end of it, and I'm not likely to go to all the way to the other end. I'm not even likely to go there. But some of you may be, I don't know, you may say, I like the middle road better than the original road. I don't know. I mean, that's what we're here to do. We're here to decide what we think is in the best interest of the city and coming to some sort of consensus. We are not going to 100% agree. And so, that's obvious here. But I think we are close enough to come to some sort of consensus that we all can live with. Well, that we all have to live with.
Well, I think the original proposal would be fine, and if it had a 90 or 180-day period before it enacted, we might come up with a real ingenious way...
Right, we might.
To accommodate, you know, the contract. I don't think the sign needs to be up for three months after they finish the roof. But while there, I mean, there may be somewhere around it.
But that time limitation is only to get around the, you have to have time matter and location, or, yeah. And so, you've got to have that in there. I mean, you've got to construct something to have in that place, rather than saying onsite or offsite.
So let's go with, so let's go with that first. Does everybody agree we could go with that first?
Well, I obviously do.
Well, I know you do, but I'm talking about everybody else.
Here's the thing. I mean, we've got five commissioners here. We all come to this with a little bit different perspective. And if it's something that the original, the original ordinance passes, 3, 2, 4, 1, 5, 0, it's all good. I mean, this is just, I mean, this is just varying degrees. So, you know, if it's appropriate to take action tonight on the first, or the ordinance is first submitted, that's fine.
Mr. Bankston.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the reason I stepped forward was in relation to that very question and Mr. Martin's look, my way on that. The, and I do appreciate, as you can imagine, the detail with which he has approached this and well beyond my ability to begin to speak to the substance. But back to your procedural aspect, I am somewhat reluctant to suggest that a motion for second reading on the initial approach would be in order for the reason that, and maybe that was something we could have and should have anticipated a little bit better. And as I recall, there is not any element of the public notice of this meeting, agenda or otherwise, that anticipates that scenario. Am I correct that we were strictly looking at what the Planning Commission recommended based on your direction, was bringing back to you for your consideration? And given that, I'm, that's why I am personally a little concerned about us moving to a motion for consideration of that initial draft on second reading at this stage. I think there's a way to get there in terms of moving fairly quickly, maybe not concluding it this evening. But you do have the Planning Commission recommendation. I suppose, Mayor, if you were inclined, you could call for whether there is a motion among the Board of Commissioners in favor of that proposal, or what has been sent to you by the Planning Commission. If there is such a motion, and if it's seconded, then obviously, you'll act on that. If there is no one who wishes to advance that at this point, that would, I would think, resolve your consideration of that recommendation.
I think I already asked that.
Now, we are certainly happy to do whatever you might wish in terms of further drafting. My sense possibly was that Commissioner Davis was looking for an opportunity to process this, rather than having to act this evening. And is it fair to say it's one of those that that, if we think of door number one, door number two, and door number three, I'll assume that door number one was the first draft. This is door number two this evening. And the third approach, which I guess has taken on a name, if you don't mind, the Hodges thought, then that would be number three. Depending on what your action is on number two this evening, is there any... Is it a matter of wanting a draft or just addressing conceptually the choice between the two as early as next week, if that is your druther? The reason I say that, I think, I don't know that that draft is going to say anything that I would expect that you all fully understand, given... that I would expect that you all fully understand, given the way this has been approached. We're happy to do that, but I wondered if it was potentially an academic exercise, but...
It might be.
I didn't know if everybody needed a little more time to make a determination as to whether you knew that you wanted a particular version presented to you next week for final consideration, or whether you even want to just have a chance to think about that. And if so, I mean, we'd be happy to do a draft, but...
Well, I don't consider this an emergent issue. I would personally like a week to just think about it. I mean, that's just me.
I don't see anything wrong with that either, and also, we've changed gears here a couple times, so maybe some of the public would like to know that we've, whatever we've done, flip-flopped and are reconsidering and like an opportunity to come and address us about whatever changes we do seem to be favoring the next time.
That's, that'd be all right with me, if that's what you need to do to do.
And I don't know if anything I've said is prompted a thought on your part, Jason.
Well, I was thinking if there's consensus that to go ahead and postpone action on a first reading of this ordinance amendment till next week, that would be an appropriate action, and then we'd come back and start right back here, I would think, in a week, wouldn't we, Greg?
Yes, you could do that. I didn't know whether the group wanted to dispense with the matter as it is before you this evening, or if you just want to have all three doors available to you next week.
Your thought is because of the public notice issue that they would need a dispense of this particular item that came from the planning commission before they would want to go off onto another option?
Well, it was more a matter of whether they wanted to make that level of progress. Are all three doors available, or are two doors available? I, and it's not, I'm not saying that I've sensed precisely whether anybody wanted to go forward with the current option or not.
If I can, we can do a quick straw poll, as long as everybody sees their hands. We have three options, right? And this is, this is not a formal vote, but just so everyone sort of has, if you're willing, so everyone sort of has an idea of where you stand. Okay, today's option, I'll call it the hybrid option, who kind of is sort of leaning that way preferentially this evening?
What we have in front of us.
What you have in front of you.
Yeah, I'm fine with it as it's been crafted.
Okay, anyone else?
I could live with it, but I think I'd prefer to go the other.
Okay, anyone else?
Aye.
Okay. Who prefers the first draft, the more restrictive approach that was brought initially? Who's with or without some changes?
I'm leaning that way now, yeah.
Okay, so we got a couple there, all right?
I know, a little wishy-washy, but...
So, who prefers...
I'm with Commissioner Davis on that.
Okay, I think I can do the math, but I'll still ask.[1276.13][1276.13](laughter)
Well, I just, I think that we, I think we either have to go down the path to door number one or door number three. Try as Mr. Martin did to accommodate everything that we wanted to do with the hybrid model. I just really think we're going to have to go one way or the other. Obviously, I'm more in favor of just going completely content-neutral and probably further restricting the number of signs than what the ordinance does, just going with two all the time and up to whatever, six during election, so. But at any rate, I would probably go for a content-neutral approach.
Okay.
So, let me just ask, let me just, a parliamentarian, just say, I kind of wanted to get this ball rolling and enforce the issue. If I make a motion on this, on the action for today, we can either pass it or dispense of it and then move on to one of the other two options. Would that be, would that be correct?
I would look at Greg, but I would say absent an action...
If I make a motion...
Yeah, absent a reconsideration, action following that, it would, that would make sense.
I mean, if I make a motion to approve today's, this thing for today, and it dies for lack of a second, that's done.
That's done.
Absent a follow-up action of reconsideration, yes.
And so, the only other option to that is that if anybody wants to keep the thing on the table today alive, needs to get out in front and make a motion to postpone the decision until tomorrow. Because I'm more than willing to put a fork in this thing. And if I don't hear a motion to postpone this until next week, I'm going to make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I move to postpone this until next Monday's meeting, assuming there's space on the agenda. We can do that.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to postpone action on 8.2 until next week.
Can I just make one final comment? Please do not waste any more time in crafting anything until you get some sort of a clear direction, whether that's a return to the first one you did. But thank you for all your work you've done, but, yeah, no more. Bless your heart.
We will hold tight, waiting for the direction. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, aye.
Is it fair to say, then, that we would wish, want to be sure that the item is noticed up for the potential consideration of any one of the three approaches at this point?
Are you talking about noticing up for a second reading or just a first reading on all of them?
Any of them. First reading on any of them, we got...
Was that a first reading on...
We had a first reading on the one.
You have a first reading on door number one.[1463.83][1463.83](laughter) I think it, given the fact that there were no substantive changes, would legitimately qualify for being advanced on second reading. If you wish to act on either of the other options, I think we're at a first reading stage on either of those two, that would be the only distinction. And when I say noticed up, I mean just in terms of the normal agenda and the normal notification processes as any other agenda item, but just to be sure that the public has opportunity to be aware that you have under consideration any of the three items, is all I wanted to be sure, but, and with that clarification that...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Are we finished with that?
No, it's continued till next week.
Well, I know, but it's continued until...
If I may, Mayor, I'm sorry, I suppose one last question.
Yeah, we did. It was 4-1.
It's 4-1.
I...
You were aye.
I was aye.
Sorry.
The, Mr. Hodges indicated your thought as far as any further drafting. Just to be abundantly clear that we're responding to the group's wishes as you would consider door number three. If we wish to take that to a first reading, that would of course require that you have the ordinance before you. If you wish to have that under consideration conceptually, then that's an option, too, I suppose. It's just a question of whether a majority of you would like to see us prepare that additional draft, the draft of door number three.
I would.
Well, I guess I would say before I could accept that draft, whatever the contents of it might be, over what I've been looking at, I'd have to see something, so, yeah, I'd need something that I can read.
I'm a no. I think I've had it adequately explained here, to what opening that up means. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's basically you're just taking off the, you're saying, how many signs and how big?
Well, if you stay with the same maximum, it'd be six. The question is, do you start with two or three and then go to six presumably during election season? The content would, could always at that point be commercial or non-commercial-based, and if it's open-ended commercial, that would mean that those signs could be either considered onsite type or offsite type. I would, I think that's correct, isn't it? If it was totally...
If we didn't specify otherwise, yes, they could be onsite or offsite.
So, that's the least restrictive approach from the perspective of message, and probably the most practical from an implementation perspective, and then you get the way the other, because that, obviously, message is first, but I just always preach to you, we have to have something we think we can implement, and this is just really hard. It's not really designed to give you many good options, so.
Right. It's awful easy for me to say, but if it's helpful, that's probably the easiest of the three to draft. It hasn't been drafted yet, but probably represents less work than the first two.
So, we will see a written draft of that then.
So, I hear two of you saying you want to hear, you want to see that redraft, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because if it's written, then there's something concrete we can discuss.
And the two of you...
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, if it would be helpful so that we could then just at least reach a decision next week and go, say, we're going to pick draft or ordinance number one or ordinance number three. If that helps everybody get to that point, then, then fine, but I just don't want to send Mr. Martin down another rabbit hole.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me be clear. We're not determining one and three. We're determining one, two, and three, because we didn't dispense of two today.
No, that's the question. Two will still be active as a first reading when you come back. The question is, do you want to have option one and, options one and three available in case you say no to two? I believe that's, yeah.
Yeah, the thought was just whether, the third is the missing draft. There's no, I'll speak for Aaron. It is largely a matter of deletion and some tweaking.
Yes, it would be the easiest of the three, yes.
But just wanted to make sure we were following your direction as to what you would like to have before you next Monday on this matter.
We have three, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Nope.
Or is everybody kind of numb right now?[1780.13][1780.13](laughter) I'm numb.
In college, you could have gotten six credit hours for what we just went through.
Seems that long.
A move or adjourn.
Second. Have a motion to adjourn, and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.